Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I call this meeting in Penasco District 544 to order. Clerk, will you establish a form for us, please?
Kirby Anderson?
Present.
Natalie Dickinson?
Yes.
Melanie Gold?
Present.
Matthew Lebkey?
Here.
Missy Hermes?
Here.
Stephen Vigess?
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
To who?
Mr. Steve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda passes. I will move on to our public meeting. Our first report is going to be the World's Best Workforce. Are you doing technology too?
Yes, actually I'll do technology first and then I'll move into technology.
So we're going to do Technology Plan and Internet Safety Policy first, and then after that we will do World's Best Workforce and present advice to Superintendent Drake.
Alright, good evening. Public Statement Regarding Technology Plan and Internet Safety Policy. As Internet access became well-established practice in public education, neither state nor federal governments have continued to require the district to adopt a technology plan for the implementation of Internet access. District Policy 542, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety, does govern the use of the Internet for the purposes of education to include classroom activities, educational research, and professional and career development activities and uses deemed necessary for the operation of the organization. As part of this policy, the district utilizes Internet content filtering software, in our case Go Guardian, to block access through the school's network to visual depictions that would be considered inappropriate or harmful.
And with that, I will shift to the district's World's Best Workforce Report. This is an annual report, one that is also shared with the Minnesota Department of Education.
Our mission statement: The mission of the Ferguson Falls Public Schools is to prepare productive and engage members of society by creating an environment where all students reach their full potential. So we have six goals in our World's Best Workforce Report. We'll touch on each of those briefly. Goal number one has to do with school readiness, all students ready for school, and by that, ready for kindergarten. And so we have early childhood family education, and we have Otter Preschool. ECFE works with students birth to age five, and we served 178 children in the 2019-20 school year. In school readiness, which is Otter Preschool, we served 130 students in six classrooms, which included half-days, either two or four times per week. When we look at progress towards the goal, the students are evaluated on several different aspects a few weeks into their start of kindergarten. And then you can see that they are rated on a scale of one to four, four being exceeds expectations, one being beginning level or no understanding. When you look at the results, the district will continue to work on this goal. We had 13 out of 205 students, that's 6.3%, that exceeded expectations, 28.3% that had a secure understanding when we were ready for kindergarten. But nearly half of our students were at the partially ready status, and another nearly 16% not deemed ready for kindergarten. Although this report deals with the 1920 school year, one of the factors that we will discuss later on in the meeting would be expanding our preschool options to offer up to four full days of preschool for families to choose moving forward. And we think that that will have a positive impact in preparing some of those students to be kindergarten-ready. Our next goal has to do with third grade literacy, basically reading at grade-level proficiency. Unfortunately, some of these goals will be unable to report on those because of COVID-19. We did not administer the MCA's last spring, and that measurement is how we measure our progress on our goal, and third grade literacy was one of those areas. Closing the achievement gap, still this would be another goal where between socioeconomic groups and ethnicities, we would look to close the disparity in proficiency scores, again measured by results of the MCA tests, which we did not administer, nor did any other schools last spring due to COVID-19. Goal number four, college and career readiness. All students obtain career and college readiness before graduating from high school. So we do have the personal learning plans. Those are in the process of being revised. Katherine Anderson has a draft that she is working on that will eventually go to the board for approval, and the personal learning plans will be the updated version of the Otter Success Plan. We do offer a number of technical programs, as well as a work-based learning program that's now at the start or halfway through its third year. We have a recognized automotive service program, and we do have an active partnership with businesses in the area as we continue to develop our programming, especially in those vocational areas. CNC being another area, CNA, excuse me, another area that we have an active partnership with our community. We also have a STEM program, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, that incorporates those science and math fields, as well as in the arts and engineering and design. So that is a continuing program that we have gearing students up for careers in those fields as they get closer to graduation. Again, progress to some of those goal areas tied to the MCA's that were not administered. On the graduation rate, you can look at, of course, our goal would be that 100% of our students graduate on time, meaning within four years. We do have some work to do in this area. Those results are pretty strong Kennedy Secondary School, but when you looked historically at the ALC or IQ Academy, those numbers were considerably lower, and then taken in altogether, those drop our graduation rates considerably as a district. Both IQ Academy and the ALC did develop specified plans that now are in their, I think, second year, second or third year of implementation to close that gap. And we do know, although it's not reported here, the graduation rate goes back a little bit, but we had much better results at the end of last year. The graduation rate that this is referring to would have been in 2019. Under communication, establish effective two-way communication with parents, guardians, and other stakeholders in the community. We do have a number of things that we do to keep the community informed, be it postings on our school website, or Facebook page, articles that are written, or other publications and communications that go out both to the community and our families. We do have a robust system involved for evaluating the effectiveness of our instruction and curriculum. And so the DACRAC group meets once a month during the school year, and we have a formal process for all curriculum adoption. We also are heavily involved in support for our students with response to intervention, Title I services. We did our personal learning, professional learning communities. Last year, we're focused on differentiated instruction. So a number of initiatives that we take to continue to improve our instructional practice and provide supports for students to be successful academically. That is, again, supported by our staff development plan and a budget that's designed to sustain this district plan. And that concludes my presentation on the World's Best Workforce Report.
Any questions from the board to Superintendent Drake on the hearing reports? Thank you, Superintendent Drake. Okay, moving on to our next item is we have a resolution of acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and read for its adoption. A thank you to Casey's General Store for their donation of miscellaneous automotive supplies to the automotive program at Kennedy Secondary School, and also a thank you to Barry and Pamela Veteran for their donation to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals.
Can I get a second on that resolution?
Second.
Mr. Steve? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Dickinson?
Yes.
Melanie Gold?
Yes.
Matthew Lebkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Vigess?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to item number E, as we honor our reports. Our first report is going to be from McKinley and Adams School Principal Scott Colbeck.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to give you an update on some numbers of where we're sitting at right now currently at McKinley and Adams with specific grade levels. As of today in kindergarten, we are sitting at 170 students. Of those, 16 are distance learning. 9% then of our entire kindergarten student body is in a distance learning section. That number of 16 is a little bit smaller than the average kindergarten class size at McKinley. In first grade, between the two buildings of McKinley and Adams, we have 183 students. 21 of them, or 11%, are distance learning. That 21 is about the average class size in first grade. And then in second grade, we're sitting at 179 total students. 22 of them, or 12%, are in the distance learning section. That 22 is about right at class average across all second grade classrooms. Currently, across the two buildings, I do have three classrooms that are quarantined, one at each grade level, a kindergarten class at McKinley, and first grade class at McKinley, and then a second grade class at Adams. Ironically, the second grade class at Adams is in around two of quarantine. Up to today, we've quarantined 10 classrooms between the two schools, but really nine because of the one classroom that's been quarantined twice. And then really, I could make the argument for it's really eight, because if this is a word, we de-quarantined a classroom. We had quarantined a classroom, got some further information that allowed us to bring this group back only after one day of distance learning. So we had many, many happy families there. In fact, able to return their children to school today. The original plan had them coming back a week from today. In second grade, then, we've had five of our classes that have been quarantined. First grade has had two classes, and kindergarten has had three. But then again, really in kindergarten, you could say that's really two, not three. We were pleased that recently, Minnesota Department of Health has come out with some new guidelines that really help us as a staff, to get our staff back into the buildings much faster. So now, instead of a 14-day quarantine, we have some options of a 10-day quarantine, and even a seven-day quarantine. It was a great Monday to get four staff at McKinley back after a seven-day quarantine, because after that fifth day, they went on and got a test. The test came back negative, and so we were able to bring them back after a seven-day quarantine, so they came back on the eighth day. So that helped us tremendously last week. We had a couple of days where we had 10 staff out at McKinley. However, we didn't need to find subs for all 10. Two or three of them that were out were regular ed-classroom teachers. We didn't need to find subs for them because they were teaching from home. There are students who were also home. But the other seven, we did need to find subs for, and we were able to find subs for all seven of them. So we were very, very pleased. It's an entire team effort right now to keep our buildings fully staffed, and every day that we can do that, we're celebrating those small victories. Recently, at Adams School and at Cleveland, all of our second grade students were given what's called the COGAT test, or Cognitive Abilities Test. This is a really interesting battery of tests. There's three batteries. There's a verbal battery, a quantitative battery, and a non-verbal battery. And within each battery, there's three sub-tests. Each sub-test takes anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes. So in the course of a day, we only give one battery, because that's three 10 to 15-minute tests. For example, in the verbal battery, there's a sub-test called Picture Analogies, another one called Sentence Completion, and a third one called Picture Classification. In the quantitative battery, there's Number Analogies, Number Puzzles, and Number Series, and Non-Verbal Battery includes Figure Matrixes, Paper Folding, and Figure Classification. The COGAT then measures a student's learned reasoning abilities. These abilities are developed through in-school and out-of-school experiences. Students will receive a stay-night score of one through nine, nine being the highest. What we're excited about with these tests this year, this is only the second year we've given them. Last year was the first year we gave them kind of late in the year, just some time to get them back right before students then went home to be distance learners from March, April, and May. So we're looking forward to getting these results back earlier, and then to be able to keep our kids in person with us so that we can use the results of this. Teachers can have a great benefit having those results. Lastly, I just want to share with you that we had a PTO meeting the other night, and PTO understands that they have a timeline, that they need to get to the board for approval, any fundraisers that they might be looking at doing this spring. And they are considering doing a fundraiser. They're just not sure which one it's going to be. So they might submit both of them to you for approval with the understanding that they would just do either the Booster-Thon or our Rita-Thon. We did not do the Booster-Thon last year. We had plans to do it last spring. We did do it two years ago and three years ago, and each time it raised $25,000 for our parent-teacher organization. So just wanted the board to know that that's part of the plans of PTO. We probably see those fundraising requests coming for you for approval. Again, they'll probably explain two of them, but just probably it would be telling you that they'd like to do one of them, not both. So that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions from the board for Principal Colbeck?
You said the COGAT test probably won't get that until March. Is that what happened last year? Took it at the same time?
So last year, I don't exactly remember the exact month the COGAT was administered. I would say it was probably sometime in February, but now we've administered it already, and we're getting it ready to send off for scoring, and we'll get those results back much sooner this year.
Have we heard if there will be testing this spring? Do we know yet?
I would say that, well, I'll use MAP testing as an example. We're planning, we MAP tested this fall. We're planning to do it this winter, the last week in January and the first week in February, and we'd like to do it in the spring. We were unable to do it last spring. Now, that's MAP testing. We do that in RACE K1 and 2. As far as the MCA's, Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, starting in grade three and up, I would imagine that those would go on as planned, assuming that we can administer those.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Our next report is from our Cleveland principal. Can you run?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Colbeck did such a great job explaining the COGAT assessment that I'm just going to start there with my report. We have been conducting the COGAT assessment in Cleveland as well with the second grade classes, and then also our fourth grade students. And when we were in the midst of having the fourth graders take the COGAT assessment, we ended up with a lot of students needing to be out of school, quarantined a class or two. And so we were very thankful that we've had a healthy week at Cleveland last week and now this week, too. So we are doing our diligence to schedule makeup sessions to give each of these students the opportunity to complete this assessment and also give us a good measure of their ability. And we two teachers are looking forward to getting the results of the COGAT and putting that information to good use this year. So it's perfect timing to do this. And I think the last time I reported, we might have just been getting organized to do our annual community service project at Cleveland, which we call Presents for Pets. And we had a Christmas tree up in the lunchroom, and students are invited to donate items that benefit the Otter Telkomy Humane Society. And they are very generous in doing so. Today, that project completed, and all the items were loaded up and delivered to the Humane Society. And kids are really excited to have that opportunity to see how they can make a difference in their community, and we just have a lot of fun with this. And then along with us, we have a virtual parade of pets going on in Cleveland, and this parade has been added to each week. With the help of Jesse Thorsted, we are adding pictures of students with their pets to the virtual pet parade, and the link is shared with their teachers. So when there's some time in the classrooms to enjoy each other's pictures and involve themselves and their pets, that's being played in their classrooms and also in the hallway of Cleveland. So we are having lots of fun with that. Typically, these first two, these weeks leading up to Christmas vacation are filled with all sorts of activities, from gingerbread making, gingerbread house making, where our third grade students invite their parents to come in and build a gingerbread house with them, to our fourth grade classes, who have hosted a math and reading event during the afternoon, inviting their parents to come in and see some of their projects, or share a special essay that they've been working on. So we're missing out on those activities this year. However, a couple special events are continuing. Our fourth grade orchestra always looks forward to their very first performance, their very first concert for their families this week before Christmas break. And rather than having that take place in the gym in person and at this time, they are choosing to do a winter concert in January. And they have plans underway to record this event and be able to share the lead with their families and classmates, so that people can hear the progress that these new musicians have made since starting lessons in September. And just want to recognize, Mr. Craig Peterson is really doing an outstanding job of providing lessons for those students who are doing distance learning, communicating with parents from week to week as to which group has in-person lessons this week, and posting a lesson that the other students who don't have lessons, they're able to do at home. But doing a really, really great job of communicating and making some special arrangements so these kids do have that opportunity to learn how to play their instrument and have that great experience. So just a final shout-out for Mr. Craig Peterson there. And then one other event that we always look forward to is our sing-along. In Cleveland, we have a sing-along that day before Christmas break, and share some talents and have some time to be silly with one another. And then each grade level has an opportunity to perform some special songs that they've been working on in music class. And my office is just a couple doors down from the music room, and I'm clearly getting the benefit of these special songs and all the excitement that's going along with them these days. So the kids are having that fun experience in their music classes right now, despite not being able to get together in the gym like we usually do. And then to conclude, I too, I wanted to just kind of update you on some of the numbers on grade levels at Cleveland. We have two second grade sections at Cleveland, and there are a total of 48 students in those classes. Grade three has 172 students enrolled. 24 of those students are in the distance learning section, which equates to 14% of the third grade are in the distance learning section. And in fourth grade, there are 144 students enrolled. We have seven sections of fourth grade, and we have that number. And 28 of those students are in the distance learning section, which is 19% of the grade level. And there's a, the average class, there's a range. The average class size in third grade is at 21 right now, with a range of 20 to 22. And the distance learning section again is 24. So the distance learning section in third grade is a little larger, and in fourth grade, it also is just a little bit larger than the in-person classes at this time. And there's a range in fourth grade from class size of 18 up to a class size of 22. And that happens. We work hard to balance these classes, but depending on who's being moved out of the district, or who might have shifted to distance learning, there's a variety of reasons for that little bit of imbalance. But teachers are doing a great job of working together, supporting one another. You can clearly see that teachers are cultivating that empathy and giving some grace, all the while they're working really hard to provide some quality instruction and uphold that rigor so that we get through the curriculum throughout this semester. That's my report for this evening.
Questions from the board for Principal? Thank you. Our next report is from our Kennedy Secondary School Principal, Dean Martin.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Just to continue here a little bit, I also have to make a very special shout-out to Mr. Craig Peterson, our orchestra director. He has been short-staffed and has been, for a while now, our only orchestra director here. And he's just been doing an outstanding job to keep the ship moving forward here. On your agenda later on here tonight, you're going to see an additional gentleman that we recruited and we think is going to be a great partner for Mr. Peterson. And I think he's going to be really excited after the first of the year here when David gets on board here for us, and he's got another person to work with. But he has been working more than overtime in the meantime, and we're just really thankful for all his efforts. Also, to continue here with some numbers for you here, so get your pencils ready. I don't have the exact numbers here in relationship to our middle school for total students, but you can figure it's a little bit over or under that 200 amount. And the distance learning students that we have right now to date in fifth grade- And the distance learning students that we have right now to date, in fifth grade, we're looking at 28. In sixth grade, we have 24. In seventh grade, we have 27. And in eighth grade, we have 38. That 38 number to us, of course, is a little concerning because once we hit 40, we have to do some different things. So we were watching that very closely. And I've already spoken with some of those teachers in that eighth grade distance format. And so they know that we're approaching something here where we're going to have to do something a little different, probably to get us through in relationship to second quarter and then develop a plan here for third quarter if we want to divide that into a couple different sections. So we're watching that and working on that. And then with our high school, again, I don't have individual grade numbers for you here, but you can figure we're about at 675 students in our 9 through 12. And as of today, we have 130 students that are doing 100% distance learning with us. So you can figure out that percentage there. And then based upon the conditions that might be coming up here to finish December and also going into January, we don't know if that 130 number could possibly grow. But it has constantly been increasing here. We've had a little lull now since the high schools went to total distance. But before that, I was seeing anywhere from 3 to 5 as being a number that was kind of going out almost daily as that was growing. So just to give you a little background there in relationship to where we're at, numbers-wise. I did give a little bit of a report back from the high school student council. It's been a little bit slower of a year, but they did want to report that they had a very successful blood drive in October. In fact, with that, they basically sold out. They totally booked their schedule. Because of that, they are looking to do another drive here at Kennedy sometime in early March. And the move to distance learning, of course, put a little hamper on our food collections that they usually do in November and early December. But they were able to collect 350 pounds of food and deliver that to the local food shelf. So I'm sure that anything is very much appreciated here at this time of the year. They did decide to hold off on their normal holiday fundraisers. And they're looking for a chance to do a community impact fundraiser sometime after the first of the year when we know we'll get some more students back in here face-to-face with us. So that was just a little report from the high school student council. We have had the start of the registration process. Any courses that were scheduled to be changed in relationship to next year have already been submitted to the council's office. It was pretty much a limited number. There was some consolidation of courses in the CTE area, further expansion in relationship to our work-based learning program, some offerings there. And of course, we're watching very closely in relationship to science implementation that will come up over the course of the next couple of years. So they're examining that closely as well. As we get past the first of the year here, we'll be getting our registration handbook ready so we can get that distributed and looking forward to registration sometime early February. Staff coverage for us here in grades 5 through 12 has been really good over the course of the last two weeks. Knocking whatever you can to keep that going. Frankly, in all honesty, I was very concerned at the start of November when we looked at those Mondays in early November. And we were basically staffed in the building by everybody covering for everybody else because we had totally run out of subs on those particular Mondays for about three Mondays in a row. The last two Mondays have been great. And I looked off into the next six days and were fully covered as well as of today to finish out the summer here. So probably my number one concern, even in relationship to moving our high school to distance, was allowing us the ability then to staff across the building and across different grade levels. Mr. Colbeck mentioned the need that they had given at the lower levels. And we've been able to do that, which I think has been fantastic. And a very special thank you has to go out to our current staff members that cover for each other across their departments or grade levels each and every day to make that possible. We also just recently had some midterms that we sent out. We're in the very early stages of looking at that data in relationship to what it's telling us. I think it's telling us that many students out there are still struggling. We did make a modification in relationship to our grade scale by moving a passing grade down to 50%, when it had been held at 60% before across the building. We felt that we needed to offer that as an opportunity for some students to have something to strive for. And with that change, you know, we had close to 250 reductions in our Fs that were recorded, failing grades that were recorded there. But if we move that back to 60%, then we're still back down in the 20 to 30 range there in relationship to the true difference that happened there. We also did notice that 50 more students came off the list as far as having failing grades. So again, we haven't dove into the data completely here. But I think that's telling us that the some students that were struggling in relationship to one or two courses probably had a chance to do a little bit better. Those students that were struggling over the course of multiple courses are probably still in that situation here yet today. So with that, we've been trying to offer all kinds of interventions. We have some information and some flyers that are going out here with the midterms that talk about offering some tutoring options here Wednesday evenings from about 2 to 6 and also on Saturday mornings. So we're trying to get the word out that we're here, we're ready to work with students. We just need them to come in and take advantage of some of that help. Staff, for the most part, is looking to accept late work throughout the whole of this second quarter here for us, right up to the end, offering some additional points for attendance, trying to offer some more uniformity in relationship to how our Google classroom looks. So that can be helpful for our students. Looking at the possibility of adding some study halls here come second semester. So some students with the opportunity to reduce their number of courses that they were working on down a little bit. So hopefully that will help. Our teachers are contacting students, our counselors are contacting students. We're doing a lot of work here in relationship to inviting students in to both the middle school and the high school. Our middle school students are coming in on Wednesdays. The reports I was hearing that we had 20 to 30 students coming in basically on the distance day to receive some additional help from teachers in the classroom. And then on Tuesdays and Fridays, our high school students are being welcomed into the building here as they've been invited there to, again, get some individual or small group help from their instructors. We also have small groups that are coming in in the areas of physical education, some vocational classes, some of our CTE classes, some of those more hands-on classes so that they can have some opportunities. And if they come in on Tuesdays and Fridays, it doesn't interfere so much with the rest of course work that they're getting on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We also know that students will be coming back to us at some point or another. So we've been taking a very close look at different models out there. I think we've found that when our distance students were getting one day a week under our current hybrid model that we were doing, that definitely wasn't enough. Now we've offered those same students three different days, everybody being under the same schedule. So we're looking at a possibility of bringing students back on more like a three-to-two kind of basis with three days being offered. With that, could be the possibility of inviting all of our high school students back in over the course of those three days. And yet having two of our students, because if we get to that 130 or 140, 150 kind of amount, you know, you're still talking 25 to 30% of our high school students that could be on distance learning here for the rest of the year. So we need to make sure that we're doing an outstanding job with those students, no matter what other model we're using here toward the second half of the year. So anyway, those are just some brief points. Again, we'll keep looking into that data. We'll keep contacting the kids. We certainly want to tell the parents out there that we're open here in relationship to small groups and individuals. Contact your teacher, come on in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, get the help you need here so we can still do some good work here over the course of the first semester. Questions from you?
To Dean, with those kids, the 15 kids that dropped off the end list, did they use the interventions or maybe don't know?
I'd say it was a combination of everything. And when I want to say 50, it's the mid-quarter numbers that we had for first quarter compared to now our mid-quarter numbers here in second quarter.
Fifty, not 15?
Fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. And all kinds of various reasons, you know, probably limitless. Getting that additional help, coming, and it's been a revolving door. We've just had a lot of students showing up, getting that individual or small group help. And it's amazing what they're doing on the time and days when they come in here and put some effort left with their teachers.
And are the counselors seeing a lot of students reach out to them? Or is it more the counselors reaching out to the students for time to be counseling?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for them, but I think, I think for the most part, it's counselors reaching out to kids.
And just doing like a phone session kind of, or is it?
Yeah, kind of what our expectation was is that we asked the teachers to go ahead and contact, you know, any student that was in that failure range. And if we had students that had multiple failing grades, then we wanted to turn that over in addition to that, to the counselors so that they could make that contact as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, it's 6:00 PM and I don't, oh, it's like, we gotta wait. We gotta move from our, we're gonna go to the back of the agenda. We go to the last page. There is a 6:00 PM meeting, the Fergus Falls Public Schools Taxes Payable 2021. And I just gotta wait for that to start. I don't know if we could got it done in the separate room. I'm not going to teach you here, so. Okay, it's 6 o'clock. And so we are going to go into our public meeting for the Fergus Falls Public Schools Taxes Payable 2021. Blake Goldman, our finance director, is going to give us a, kind of questions, well, give a presentation. And then afterwards, if there's anybody in the public that wants to ask questions of board members during this, you can.
Thank you. Good evening. This should be quick and I do have some good news. Nothing has changed since I presented the taxes payable for 2021 back in September. We will be seeing a 5% decrease in the tax rate. It's going to go from 32.6% to 31%. And a lot of that is largely due to we're going to receive a credit from our debt service fund. And what happens over time is people pay into the taxes payable for our debt service, they pay 105%. Assuming that there is going to be delinquent taxes out there where they would have to cover those in case. So that's why there's always 105%. So over time, we've built up a significant fund balance in Fund 7, which is our debt service fund. And this year, we're going to see a credit of 190,000. So that played into a large piece of why you're seeing taxes decrease. And at the same time, we're seeing student enrollment go up and our market value of property is also increasing. If you look at your school tax history that I have around you and also up here on the projector, you can see that since 95, of course, it's a very large range. But normally, you'll see the taxes payable go up with the market value of property. And also, I did, we have the enrollment piece of always follow that trend line. But also, we've seen that steadily increase and it's up close to that 25 million in adjusted net tax capacity, which is the property value. But the tax rate has been steady between that 35 to now around 30% range. And at the same time, the dollars are slightly increasing, but it's not as drastic. So that's the really good news. And just to note, we're also, as we pay down debt, we're seeing our principal and interest payments significantly decrease over time here. So that's another reason why we're seeing that nice credit. With that, I will open up for any questions.
Any questions from the board or from the community strictly to deal with our taxes payable this year? I do have, so the taxes payable, it would be 2022, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'm going to close the taxes payable meeting and move back into our agenda. Back onto item E and your reports, and we'll move on to Kirby Anderson of 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
Okay, thank you. The, no report for finance committee, but we do have a report from the 544 Foundation. We did meet last Thursday, December 10th via Zoom. And we have a donor newsletter going out. The donor newsletter goes out to the potential donors and past donors who will give $544 per year for a five-year commitment. So that'll be going out next year. November 19th, we had Give to the Max Day, which is a program that encourages people to give to their favorite charities on that particular day. And we pulled in $400 that day just through that particular promotion. Another promotion we have is called Leave a Legacy, Fergus Falls. And we're tying it with Leave a Legacy Minnesota. And what Leave a Legacy Minnesota is, it's a public awareness program sponsored by the Minnesota Plan Giving Council and also the National Association of Charitable Gift Planners. And it's designed to inspire and educate people to think beyond their lifespan to do good works. So it's kind of an estate planning type thing. And so we're going to be dovetailing with the state organization to do that here, Leave a Legacy Fergus Falls. Another former fundraiser is planned out for the Legends Golf Tournament in July, July 9th. And that is a major fundraiser for the foundation. And last, and certainly not least, the scholarship applications are going onto the internet on the first of the year. And the counselor's office will have hard copies for students that are going on to secondary education. And they can fill these out. April 1st deadline to apply for these scholarships. So again, going on the website, January 1st on the 544 Foundation website. And those hard copies will be available at the counselor's office. So I encourage all of our students that are going on after they graduate to apply for these scholarships. It's a really good deal. That's my report. If there's some questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Kirby. Our next report's from Melanie Cole for Special Aid Co-op, Region 1 and Activities.
The Activities Committee has not met, so there's nothing to report there. Special Education Cooperative had an executive board meeting today and again, refreshed on the child count, which is a really lengthy process to just determine the number of students served by the Special Aid Cooperative. And then just some considerations were presented to the board about the seven member districts and the varying school schedules and the services for students that have special needs and high needs and just some of the considerations. It's additionally challenging to provide those services for the special education students during this time. So just kind of refreshed that a little bit. And then just a couple of personnel hires and we approved the audit for the Special Education Cooperative. Our Region 1 Board met. Our Region One Board met, met on October twenty fourth over the telephone and ran through the ongoing activities of the Region, Region One Board. And there was really nothing noteworthy, just business as usual with the technology and server farm and the changes in the, being considered for the various programs that are offered by Region One. So I don't have anything more than that unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Herme, staff development and policy.
The Policy Committee has not met, but the Staff Development Committee has. We met on December seventh and it was an excellent meeting. One of the things that was brought up was what would be presented at the January and March in-service that are coming up. And so some of the breakout sessions will include presentations by Natalie Hearn from Thrive. And some of the things the teachers will be having in-service on are grading in distance learning and hybrid, suicide awareness, technology. They're also gonna have a keynote speaker, Ben Rendrude from Ripple Training. And Ripple stands for Relationships Inspired Impact Convention and Leading. And this keynote speaker from Puzzle Pieces is what we're really hoping with the staff development, they're hoping to really give some moral support and some morale building for teachers who are having, it's, it's a struggle for teachers right now. And so this is going to be a morale booster for them. They're also, we have to really thank the members of the committee who worked extra hard on the staff development plan. And you've seen that plan because it's gonna be, they have a variety of ideas, including this keynote speaker, but also some strategies for working with our English language learner students and also the implementation of a social emotional learning curriculum that we're talking about. And so that's all in that staff development as well. But actually, thank the people on that committee that worked above and beyond to put this plan together for us.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Missy. Our next report's on how the community's sending bonus and buildings and grounds.
Well, this has not officially met, but there have been discussions with Otterville County Public Health and the Frag Initiative and expanding some of that work. And so we're actually meeting tomorrow after school hours. Currently, Mrs. Erickson's class has been facilitating some of the work among the students, the student intern. And so, yeah, we're just gonna discuss how that can continue to be expanded and what we can do distantly and continue some of that work. And if you're not familiar with it, it's a true health, well, being your primary mission purpose. So it's a lot of mental health and culture type work. And then Buildings and Grounds has not officially met, but if you go out to Lincoln School, you'll see the outside just continues to look fantastic. And the inside, they're working on painting, floor coverings. And so as far as I know, that, that's on schedule still for late January. So moves up.
Okay, any questions for Natalie? Thank you, Natalie. From my reports, thanks for your Service Co-op Board, we met on Thursday. Just, we first went over the audit, got it on review, which was positive on review. One thing that I want to take out just before again, when people think that boards don't have to make changes or directions, I think one of the things that we could see back in, through the audit statement, is back in two thousand and eleven, the board had to make a change, a direction in what kind of services they were offering. The revenues were going down because at that point in time, they were heavily involved in insurance. And that portion of the revenue stream was, was coming down because contracts were, were starting to not be renewed. And so as the board, they made a direction to kind of move into more of a service entity of it. And because of that, you can see a dramatic change in just the revenue stream. And again, providing services to, to the area school districts and things of that. And so it was just kind of neat to see that, that part coming through. One thing I did find of interest is after that, we talked about, of course, one thing that we still are involved in is courses with insurance and participation and stuff like that. And they had a good year this year for both pools, both the city and county and school district. But one thing that they brought up, which I think is COVID related, is that they believe in twenty, that we need to brace for twenty twenty two because they believe that is going to be a hard hit for insurance programs because a lot of people are waiting to do their surgeries. And so they feel that there's gonna be a backlog and people are gonna start going back and starting to have the surgeries that they believe they have. And that they felt that that's probably gonna be kind of a negative on insurance pools in general that year. That there'll be just some heavy usage, that people are delaying to do some of the surgeries that they probably would have done. Or to be honest, it would probably have been caught because they're not going to get screens and stuff like that. And so I thought that was one thing that, just talking about insurance and programs and things that could come on, out of COVID nineteen and things of that nature. The other one is Minnesota High School League. And they had their board meeting on December third. And I think unless people are not paying attention to the news, that most of us know that the Minnesota High School League adopted going to a flexible plan. And so with that plan, there's a possibility of beginning of winter season on three dates, December twenty first, January fourth, or January eighteenth are the dates that they have chosen. Each plan has within it, allows for two weeks of practice before beginning to play on the first sport. They also put into a model that all springs, that the spring would have a full season and that the end date would be no later than June nineteen twenty twenty one. One thing that was stated, and I think this is with COVID nineteen, is flexibility and understanding that there might need to be some adjustments to scheduling and things of that nature just because of maybe one school district not being able to participate because maybe they had a COVID nineteen outbreak or something to that effect. So, but they did put a plan together, of course, this is all subject to the governor and his executive orders. And so we are waiting on that too, which is supposed to be on Wednesday. That means it's supposed to give some guidance concerning the pause. The other thing they did talk about in that meeting is they, by roll call, decided to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from the Minnesota High School League Foundation and transfer that to help out. Two hundred and fifty thousand going to assist regions with financial hardships. Another two hundred and fifty thousand to reduce membership fees for Class A and Class Double A schools. And so again, that, that is gonna be, in my estimation, a one-time fix because it's, you're pulling money from a foundation part. And so I would, I would believe that they are pre-warning people, Class A and Double A schools, that this is, we'll come back next year. So to, to brace that, again, part of that, part of that reasoning was, I think, is just like we did and we talked about it, is that the fees came in after we had already set our budgets and stuff of that nature. And so we got a bill and we hadn't budgeted it for it. So anyway, that's something that will be coming. The other thing I thought was not unique, but again, virtual and Zoom, is that they did adopt virtual state tournaments for debate and one act, and one act play to be held in the early two twenty twenty months school year. So they did adopt that, so they are gonna have that. And this is one of those kind of interesting things that, that's going on in COVID nineteen. The other one, just real quick, and I can have it on here, was the Minnesota School Board Association, they had their delegate assembly. And some of the resolutions that were passed. Total, there was eleven resolutions and I'm not gonna read all eleven resolutions. But just some of the highlight ones I wanted to bring up is one of the resolutions is again, is for stability and funding for this fiscal year, for twenty twenty one, and allowing districts to use a greater pupil count for either from October first twenty nineteen or October first twenty twenty for the twenty twenty one, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. And the rationale become is because there's a lot of school districts that parents have decided to homeschool their kids. And so they had a huge reduction in, for pupil counts. And so they're trying to, and like all of us know, for financing, it's not only a revenue side, but there's also the financing side and expense side of it, that they plan for those students to be there. So they have a staff to teach them, those students, but they didn't show up. And so you have the, first you have the expense side and then you have a revenue side. And so they're trying to get some relief from the state legislators for this year. The other one that we want to approve, recommend that they follow is Resolution Five was to be able to resolve that the Minnesota School Board urged the legislator to adjust the long-term facility maintenance formula. So new construction and the increase in new square footage of buildings without decommission of existing buildings does not result in a reduction in long-term facility maintenance. And so revenue, so what happens on that is that, just like we're doing Lincoln School, we will have new construction coming in with a better, with a better date on it, which offsets some of our older dates and they put it together. And so that can actually make our square footage become newer, but yet we still have the existing square footage. And so what happened is Morehead is getting dinged with this. Of course, they added some square footage to their facility and now they're gonna do some long-term maintenance, facility maintenance funding. And that comes from the state, so they're trying to not have that happen. So again, that would affect us and I hope that, I mean, that does get passed by the legislature. So any questions on my reports? Moving on, Steve Bigasaw, Legislative Liaison, meeting confer, in curriculum review.
Okay, meeting confer is not, that term confer. I'm not sure what the next meeting will be. There's not one site for this. Legislative reports, Minnesota came out with its budget forecast. They're actually anticipating now six hundred and forty one million dollar surpluses through the year. So we had a shortfall on entry point in, in the budget between, for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three. The, the reason why there was a surplus is we, we're actually, they saved, well, saved money by, by student deduction. Twelve, twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy six students, which is about thirty million dollars in funding that they didn't have to pay to the cost to private school and homeschooling. Now, their, the job loss has been reduced by a couple hundred thousand. Started at three hundred thirty thousand jobs, now we're at a hundred and thirty seven thousand fewer jobs and we got higher to a hundred and fifty. So we got a lot of funding announced in the budget for twenty twenty two, twenty three. The other thing is that we, we're getting, on the federal level, they're getting a lot closer to passing a relief bill. They're gaining some more support from bipartisan, bipartisan support. The important part about this is that this relief bill not only includes benefits for individuals, but also about eighty million dollars for school districts as well. So hopefully help close this funding gap that we're gonna have with this margin of students in districts for other alternatives during the pandemic. So, but it's still, looking at eighty million dollars, who gets what, how much? And then the government, the state government decides how much and who gets what. And it's just, we won't totally know for a while until we get that all figured out. Minnesota School Board Association put out their lobbying calls for the, for this next legislative year. Interestingly enough, the, the funding for Special Aid Education is not on this list. There was a big one last year with filling the funding gap, you know, a shortfall of about forty percent of Special Aid funding that I think they need to realize. There'd be much money for that at this time around. But what they're focusing more on is closing gaps when it comes to technology, making sure that facilities funding is equitable, levies are equal, you know, for rural and metro Minnesota. Also maintaining local decision-making for local school districts. Flexibility, this pandemic is a great example of that. We're following the, 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 the state government's recommendations. We should all aim a hundred percent distance learning because of our ability to assess our own school districts. We're able to, really with just a little explanation, go against that. So we, there is a number of districts that are full distance learning, which is gonna stay in because it's better for our kids. So they're, they're open to maintain that so that there isn't a sweeping, you must do this kind of a thing. Let's see. That's all I have for my legislative. Curriculum wise, thanks to Mrs. Sheen pointing this out to me. Last year, we had the science standards, the new science standards come out. Next up is social studies. And they're anticipating having social studies be done or be ready to go with the new standards in twenty twenty two. And this, this time around, they're actually asking for feedback on, on their curriculum recommendations. They put out a first draft. And, and really the first draft, again, you know, much like the MSBA's goals, it's more equitable. They're looking at, you know, how to make sure that, you know, the boards in Minnesota, the Native American contributions is made, how to, how to reach kids through technology given what we had to go through this year. But they found it interesting that the community members and school board members can give feedback on recommendations. So, Department of Ed website, basically just search for social studies standards twenty twenty and find the link to, to give any feedback. They have a nice concise summary of what they're looking to do. It's actually pretty, pretty good reading. So that is all I have for my reports.
Any questions from the board? Actually, I have one question, social studies review. Are either of you, are there major changes to social studies curriculum? Like the science was just nine or two weeks.
Not what I read.
Say that again.
Is there a major change?
And again, the major changes like with the science curriculum, we had three level changes.
Scope and sequence change? No, I did not see that when reading the new standards.
No, they do have a different, they have about twenty one different items that they're looking at. And it's, it's a first draft, so they have to really be doing, they're saying this is all they're using. You got a couple years.
And our last. Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, last report for tonight is Ron Supertantri.
I will open down and.
Well, good evening, part two. One of these days, I'm going to remember to make my report in a larger font, so this will stream my older eyesight. But a number of thank yous that I want to start out with. First of all, to all the staff members of the organization for their flexibility and ability to respond to the changing needs of both our students and our community. Really, really proud of the organization and the work that it's done to date this school year. I want to also especially recognize the role of the administrative team and the number of hours that they've put in outside the school day, evenings, weekends. Certainly the principals, the building principals, Jen Kohorst, Jesse Thorsted, Elaine Jenke. Lots of personnel issues to work through in terms of people that have been quarantined and filling in. Lots of time giving notice to families that their class classrooms or individuals would.
their class classrooms or individuals would be quarantined over this. And in addition to that, just lots of everyday problem solving for issues that would not normally come up in a typical year. I want to acknowledge the National Guard for Special Continental Breakfast that they treated us to this morning. It was really thoughtful and generous of them. Uh, to several businesses that annually show their appreciation to the work of the district by sending us holiday thank you cards, et cetera. Uh, it's really thoughtful and very much appreciated by the staff. I want to thank our ninth through 12th grade parents for completing yet another parent survey. We've thrown a few of those at them over the course of the last nine months. Uh, we had 422 parents respond to the distance learning hybrid, uh, survey, and really appreciated their responses and their thoughtful and insightful comments. Uh, was certainly very helpful in guiding us in making a few additional support changes on behalf of our students, and also served to confirm some things that we were feeling as well. And then to the continued, uh, for the continued work of our 544 Foundation and Dollars for Scholars boards. Uh, they continue to work tirelessly on behalf of our school and our students, and certainly appreciate all that they do. I wanted to spend a couple of minutes this evening revisiting the transition to the current learning model that we have, in particular, ninth through 12th grade. Um, this is probably good for us to reflect on and certainly, uh, helpful for our, um, our visitors tonight that have a special interest on the path, uh, the path that we traveled and what direction that we're taking moving forward. So what were the reasons for us switching to 100% distance learning starting November 30th and running through December 22nd? Uh, rising case rates, uh, both within our county and local community certainly played a role in it. Uh, during our rapid regional response team meeting, uh, both Aditel County Public Health and members of, um, the Minnesota Department of Health, uh, both basically suggested if the district were at all entertaining a shift in learning model, uh, now would be a good time. We had experienced additional families or a higher percentage of families that were choosing on their own to shift students to 100% distance learning model. Uh, Mr. Monkey referred to this earlier, uh, but heading into, uh, the week or so in front of Thanksgiving, uh, we only had approximately 30% of our students, uh, ninth through 12th in the classroom on a daily basis at that time. That was due in part to a switch to distance learning and in part due to, uh, effects of quarantine. Uh, Mr. Monkey also mentioned the fact that we were, uh, under some duress in terms of being able to fully staff the district. And so, uh, a lot of shifting was going on, uh, moving people out of traditional roles to help cover for staff that had either tested positive COVID-19 or were under the restrictions of a quarantine. And in part, uh, moving ninth through 12th to distance learning enabled us additional flexibility to, um, utilize substitutes with our goal of, uh, as much as possible, keeping our K through six 100% face-to-face and our seven, eight continuing on their hybrid model. Another factor that played a role in it was the increasing difficulty of maintaining the face-to-face instructional model, the, uh, addressing the students' needs on their off day under the hybrid, and then also juggling the needs of the 100% distance learning. Uh, only our ninth through 12th grader, or ninth through 12th grade teachers were given that task, and it, um, and it's pretty challenging and has been challenging, to say the least. And then in addition to the, uh, rising COVID-19, uh, numbers that we were seeing, we hit, uh, we had our highest, uh, peak to date at 215 and change. Uh, but there was a prediction or warning that the Thanksgiving holiday, it may be essentially a super-spreading event as families gathered and then went their separate ways afterwards. And so, uh, concerns from Lake Region Health, um, the Health Clinic, which is tied to Stanford up in Purim, and then Tri-County Health, uh, all of those institutions had some concerns that this could spin out of control and overwhelm or make difficult their ability to handle, uh, the increased load of, uh, more and more acute, uh, patients that required additional medical care. So looking back on it, uh, looking at where we are now, uh, I still support that decision. I think it was the right one, given the information that we had at the time. But now at this point, uh, we're also able to look at things with some hindsight and new data. And one of the things that, uh, many folks, uh, staff and families alike, or students, are interested in knowing is where do we head from here? And out of respect, uh, for our visitors tonight that are here, especially for that topic, um, I may save some time from having to, uh, attend the entire work session, uh, but we'll give a little bit of a preview on some thoughts from the administrative team on what that might look like, uh, when school resumes following our winter holiday break. These are simply options, uh, that we would like to discuss in further detail during the work session. Uh, but right now, we would ask the board to consider, um, continuing the junior high on their hybrid model through the end of second quarter or first slash first semester. And then assuming that, um, we do not have any evidence of, um, larger degree of COVID-19 spread or contagion, moving the junior high starting on the, uh, January 25th, the first day of third quarter, to four days per week of in-person instruction. Beginning on January 4th, we would ask the board to consider an option that would bring ninth through 12th grade students in face-to-face, three days per week, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Fridays. That would leave, um, an additional day from our beginning of school year model. It would give our 100% distance learning learners an extra day of instruction, and bringing the remainder of the high school students in that are interested in face-to-face brick and mortar, an additional day of face-to-face instruction as well. So it really benefits, uh, both sets of learning groups. By starting on January 4th, it would provide an additional seven days of direct face-to-face instruction prior to the scheduled end of the semester, uh, which may be enough to, uh, help some additional students get those grades up to a passing level and earn credit towards their diplomas in that time. We believe that 130 to 150 students most likely would continue under their 100% distance learning model. So one of the criticisms that could be aimed at this plan is that we are, uh, bringing a higher concentration of students into the classrooms under, under this, uh, proposed learning model. And, and that is true, that would happen. Uh, but I just want to remind folks that, um, we're still looking at, you know, 20 to 25% of those students that would not be in the classrooms, um, as they typically were because they're going to be in 100% distance learning model. Um, so we are not, uh, under this plan, um, even though we're bringing the, the brick and mortar, uh, we're not still operating at 100% capacity. Uh, that said, I would, um, I would caution people, uh, that, uh, under this model, uh, we would not at all times be able to enforce a strict six-foot social distancing. I think people need to be aware of that. Uh, it does potentially come with some greater risk of, um, being out seven to, uh, 14 days due to quarantining. But at some point, um, which we've discussed, uh, on numerous occasions as an administrative team, um, the impact, uh, both academically and socially emotionally of kids not being in the classroom starts to swing that pendulum where the risk is greater keeping them out than it is bringing them in and restoring more of a learned normalcy, uh, to their educational experiences. So that's, that's a model that, uh, we would plan to, uh, to discuss with you at some length this evening in our work session. Regarding co-curriculars, uh, certainly has been a hot topic throughout the state, uh, going back all the way to August. Uh, our recommendation would be that, uh, the district follow the guidance and directives of Governor Walz when he makes that determination. Uh, I will add this, uh, comment, um, I've been very public about it with the board and public about it with both the, uh, staff and students, and certainly would share it with the community as well. Uh, we are, uh, primarily, our number one goal is as an academic institution. And so, um, in, it would be my belief that at all times, as we look to prioritize the goals of the district, uh, first being health and safety of our students, second being that we adhere to the academic experience, um, as our next highest priority. Um, co-curriculars are extremely important. I was involved with them both as a high school athlete and later on as a coach. But in terms of putting value, um, in prioritizing the needs of, um, what's right in terms of certain students, I personally would never place co-curriculars above academics. Uh, that is my belief that it held for a very long time. Um, so that said, um, those are the key components, uh, that we would, um, would engage in conversation with during our work session, both the learning model and the, um, the governor's, uh, directives about returning to, um, high school sports and youth activities at some point. Uh, shifting focus, I do want to update the board on some facilities items. Uh, we have, uh, received from Buttwiler's, uh, estimates on some roofing work. Uh, it varies, this is all tied to the KSS facility and in particular, the roof sections, uh, over the pool. They divided it up into five sections. Option one would be rebalasting at an estimated cost of below $154,000. So when you rebalast, uh, you're moving, removing the, um, the rock weight that holds the, uh, rubber membrane down on the, on the surface of your roof. Um, this was very common, uh, very common technique for a number of schools. Uh, the more, um, popular model now has an adhered surface where you're getting rid of all that rock ballast and you're gluing the membrane down. Uh, but it is more expensive, uh, that would come in at just over $200,000. Uh, moving on to Roosevelt. Um, I made a decision to talk about this kind of at the last minute. Uh, it's been, uh, a topic of frustration, uh, with the community and district for a long time, but I do want to update some, uh, the board and community on some recent progress on the Chiller project. Um, as a reminder, we had had the solution sent out for analysis, uh, probably four months ago now. Uh, it came back as not being in the right ratios. Uh, that solution was sent out to a different firm for reanalysis, and again, it came back as being out of lack. And so we ordered some additional chemical that now has the solution in the proper, um, proper ratios. We had another issue with an external filtration device, um, so there was sediments in the solution that needed to be taken out in order to operate at full capacity. Um, if it hasn't been installed already, I believe it has, but that external filter will be installed and operational. Uh, we had a rebuilt pump, and that still didn't bring up to 100% functionality. And so we are in the process of ordering a replacement pump. On the promising side, with a warning, um, we have been able to chill the solution down to 38 degrees. That is enough to produce a single summer sheet of ice. What we do not know at this point is, um, it really can't be tested fully until we're in July and August, and we've got our hottest months and our highest humidity levels. Uh, those two components, taxing the system to its maximum degree will determine ultimately whether we have the capacity, uh, to fully support a summer sheet of ice, uh, moving forward. Um, that said, this is as promising a news as the district has had on the status of the Chiller probably in five years. So, um, I, I cannot comfortably come up and make promises, uh, but what I'm, what is being reported to me, uh, has some, uh, exciting promise to it. Uh, lastly, at Roosevelt, uh, we have been doing some work to the old gym. Uh, we replaced the lighting with new LED fixtures. Uh, we're in the process of getting plexiglass to go down at the base of the second-story balcony on the one side, uh, we'll be doing some painting in there. Uh, the gym has the ability to function and operate, um, as in, um, as a host site for events this year. So we're very excited about that and frankly, uh, fills a need for us. Uh, Lincoln School, Natalie did a nice job of updating on that. Uh, we will be working with, um, both the Daily Journal and, um, some other organizations in town to eventually plan a ribbon cutting ceremony and also scheduling an open house. Um, and again, our hope is that we are occupying that facility on February 1st. Strategic planning update, uh, the curriculum committee recommendations are done. The staff climate and culture committee recommendations are done, and the student climate and culture recommendations are nearly complete. Um, if we don't touch on, um, on the curriculum piece this evening during the work session, there's plenty on the agenda already, uh, we certainly will hit these, uh, during the January work sessions. And then we will need to have a conversation about when to start up the, um, facilities committee. Uh, finally, uh, we've been, two last pieces, uh, we've been awaiting, uh, an announcement from the governor, uh, in particular about, uh, well, when, uh, will businesses be opened or partially reopened, um, out of care and concern for our local community and our, uh, small business owners and otherwise. Uh, but we're also looking for guidance on the Minnesota State High School League activities and, uh, other student or youth activities. Uh, we originally thought that would take place Friday, it was pushed to Monday, and now we're hearing it was pushed again until Wednesday. Um, to me, that means that the governor has not decided what he's going to do at this point. So, um, I have no, I have no insight, uh, not hearing anything. So, uh, I will be waiting along with everyone else. And then I want to, uh, just close as we come upon this, uh, holiday break and express my sincere appreciation, uh, to Lance Wells and his food service crew. Uh, they will be preparing and distributing, uh, meals for our students, uh, over the holiday break. And I think it's a wonderful gesture, and, uh, appreciate, uh, the work of Lance and his staff. So with that, uh, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions for Suketan Dray? Thank you. Moving on to our item number F, there's our general consent items. We have amendments for the November 16th board meeting, uh, bills and treasury report. Kirby Anderson.
Yes, uh, Natalie Nootson and I met with Blake prior to this meeting, and we did the, uh, the bills for November. Um, our, uh, our bank account balance was down just under a million dollars because we had a number of, uh, large payments that went out. We went to K-12 management, which is part of our IQ Academy, so this year 20 payment, that was one of the bigger ones. We also had a, I believe it was a fifth payment to, uh, to Comstock, or sixth payment to Comstock, I retired early. Target, which is coming on quite well. According to the reports we're seeing, we're looking at early 2021, sometime around February 1st. And I've heard reports of people that have been out there, and it's quite impressive. Some other bills that we talked to Blake about, we did purchase the driver's training car, so we rolled that lease into a straight purchase for about $12,000 to save the district some money. And I believe we rolled that lease payment into the purchase price. The New York Chiller Project, we had a bill there for $6,800. Superintendent Drake already talked about that one. $1,200, we have new water dispensers, we're converting our water pumps over to water dispensers. What else? We have, we have a bill that we paid to Design Intent Architects for the Lincoln Project of $6,450, $3,000 of that was as part of the original contract. We still owe two more payments of $3,000. And we did have a detailed explanation on that, and I believe that Superintendent Drake and Blake have talked to the principal of that company, and if we have any additional change orders or anything, there will be future explanations on that. But that was due to some changes that the state made regarding the trusses at the Lincoln About $4,000 towards a federal audit, and we bought some more Chromebooks for $5,000. We have some pass-throughs for Hillcrest for some textbooks, which we act as an administrative agent to help them out. $47,000 for Kirkland's rent, and a boiler upgrade for $8,000. And I think we'll thank the swim boosters for helping us to put in new starter blocks, and so, we got a $10,000 pass-through to finish paying off those starter blocks at the pool. So, everything appears to be in order. Thank you, Blake. And any questions on the bills?
Any questions for Kirby? You ready for a pool?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Hey, personnel, Elaine Jenkins.
Good evening, members of school board, along with members of our community. We do have a few items under personnel tonight. First item is Karen Starnes, resignation as a supervisor at our BLC. Second is retirement of Ricky Thome. He has been custodian here throughout the school district for maybe two and a half years, and there's a resolution later on in the agenda under the business. We have support staff hire of Joey Miller. She's an English learner education aide. She'll be working part-time, four and a half hours during student contact days here at Kennedy Secondary School. Certified teaching staff hires, we have Chip McAllister as a long-term elementary substitute teacher, and that's effective November 19th through the end of December here, December 22nd, along with Heather Schrader. And that's an increase IP, our teacher, of .1667, one class basically for the 2021 school year. And then, we also have some support staff contract settlements, and that's between our par educators and our title-one par professionals. So, I would recommend these items for the board.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion on the general consent items? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. Old business, we have the FY '20 Ferguson Falls Public Schools Financial Audit. Can I get a motion to approve that? Steve, do I get a second? Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have the 2019-2020 Ferguson Falls Public School World Best Workforce Report to approve that was presented today. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion?
I just have one thing I'd like to say. Just want to thank the people that worked on this. As you read the report and look at all the people, not just within the school, but also within the community that have helped to put this together, it was a pretty big project and quite well done. So, I just want to publicly thank those who put this together.
Any comments or questions? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two is the Lakewood Mental Health Center Agreement with ISDA 544 effective January 1st, 21 through December 31st of 21. Can I get a motion to approve those contracts? Thank you, Steve. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three is a request for two additional full-time special education par professional positions based on new student enrollment. Adams is one, and Cleveland has the other, and the hire of Tammy Bauer at Cleveland effective on 12/2 of 20, and Hannah Mattson at Adams effective 12/7, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Melanie. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four is the lease agreement between Boundge Domestic Center, Ferguson Falls, Minnesota, and Independent School District 544, effective December 7th of 2020 through February 28th of 2021. Can I get a motion to approve that? Thank you, Steve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion or questions? Alls in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number five is the 2021 Community Arena User Agreement for the following seasons, January 1st through March 31st of 2021, and October 1st to December 31st of 2021. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Melanie. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Missy. Any discussion or questions? Alls in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item six is a request to withdraw from the Independent School District 544 from all insurance products and programs through the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust or MIST. And Blake, you want to talk on this real quick?
Sure. Sure. So, this is where we obtain our general liability. It's our biggest bill when it comes to sites and buildings across the district. Over the last three years, we've seen an increase of about 120%, which is equivalent to 85,000. The pool or the trust has been seeing some major claims over the last two years, some in excess of $2 million or so, and what's happening is that they're just, they're going to continue to increase the premiums for each school district, one of 100% this past year, and they don't see it going down in the foreseeable future. So, I felt those are the best interests of this district to go, at least go up for bid to try and get a better deal, a better premium, and go with Blake too as well.
Can I get a motion to approve what was presented about drawing from the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Melanie. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion or questions? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven is the Staff Development Plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Missy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion or questions on that? Alls in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight is a resolution on retirement of Ricky Thome, whereas Ricky Thome began his employment with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools in April 1998, and whereas Ricky has been a valued employee with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools for the past 22.5 years, and whereas Ricky has done an excellent job as a custodian for the district, and now therefore be a result by the Ferguson Falls School Board to thank Ricky Thome for his 22.5 years of dedicated service to the Ferguson Falls Public Schools. So, summing up for that resolution before its adoption. I'll offer the resolution. Thank you, Steve. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Hall.
Yes.
Mountain Limbkey.
Yes.
Missy Hurneys. Yes. Stephen Vekasah.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And then, item number nine is the levy for taxes payable 2022, correct?
Well, it's a tax, a school year FY 2022.
Okay, so it's 2020.
It's still taxes payable 2021 technically for a calendar year. FY 22 school year is what, the way you present it, the certification should levy to.
Okay, and that's setting it at $7,347,534.74. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Kirby. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion or questions? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this, we will go into a work session. We have Margariki here to speak to the board. We have COVID-19. We got early childhood programming and fee structure for 2021, 22, and strategic planning. Our next regular school board meeting will be our reorganizational meeting, and our regular school board meeting will be Monday, January 11th, 2021, at 5:15 PM at the R Community Room, that place at Kennedy Secondary School. That could be changed to someplace else at Kennedy Secondary School, so please check, because we might have to move again. And just before we go to adjourn, I just want to just say a quick, as a board chair and as a board, just to thank again to our community. I know this has not been easy, and to our staff for their hard work and our administration. It's been definitely a present, I think, and sometimes when we talk about Christmas, presents, to have our students as much as we can in our schools. I think as a board, and administration, as a staff, we want to see kids in school, we know what's good for them, and we want to get them back here as quick as we can, and also keeping everybody as safe as we can. So, just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I don't usually like to wish time by, but I am looking forward to 2021 and brighter times. So, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.